All right.
She loves dog sitting.
I'd like to call this meeting to order October 7th, 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, before I forget, the other thing I wanted to mention for next agenda, we're gonna move the Board of Select my meeting.
Okay.
So I think we have got that as an agenda I want to roll down. So, forward. The Board of Select my meeting, the next one we have to move, it's on a Monday, we have to move it to a Tuesday. Well, not the next one, the one in November.
November 5th.
Yeah.
Or we can hold our meeting in the library prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
Keep the agenda live.
So let's put it as a discussion item on our list.
Yep.
That's the other thing before it moves to the bring. Thank you. So we have some announcements here. It will be a food clinic Thursday, October 24th, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and also 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That will occur at the Senior Center on Prospect Street. It's for all Millville residents three years of age and older. Please bring your insurance cards and wear a short-sleeved tee-shirt. Of course, you've got the Board of Health and the Senior Center and the Town of Sutton Public Health Services. Please contact the Millville Board of Health at (508) 883-8433 with any questions. The town clerk sent out an informational flyer. I did receive this in my mailbox. I believe it's blue.
It is.
In the mailbox. It just has a bunch of information on it about elections, town meetings, there's a town meeting on November 4th, special election may occur on November 6th, presidential primary March 3rd, annual town election April 6th, annual town meeting May 11th, state primary September 15th, and state election November 3rd, 2020.
Okay, I have one quick question on the flyer that went up. When, when did the Facebook page that was referenced on the flyer become the official website page on Facebook for the town?
I didn't even see it on here.
It was on the flyer that was mailed out, yeah.
Resident complaints received at town hall are seen on Facebook. I don't know if it says official, but...
But if it's on there, more or less is because we're endorsing it.
So what happens if we don't attend the town meeting? We're going to see them.
I think it's just the social media.
Yeah, it wasn't, it's not endorsed by us, it's no...
But by it being on there, most people would assume it would be. So I think that should be clarified in...
Okay.
Feel free to clarify it.
There you go.
I think it should be also noted on how it got there. It wasn't put on there specifically or by somebody's prerogative.
I do not know the information to that.
I think that should be looked into.
Is there anybody else now?
No, I just know the clerk prepared this, so I don't, I don't...
Who prepared?
The town clerk. This is a town clerk mailer, she prepared it. I don't know that she was endorsing, I think she was just giving examples, trying to encourage people to show up at meetings and so forth and vote.
And not believe what you hear or see on Facebook.
Well, I think she was just representing that there are complaints, we occasionally get complaints here at town hall and, you know, on Facebook, and I don't know if she knows other Millville-related Facebook accounts, but a number of them, I think.
Yeah, we had a Facebook account some time ago, and when we switched from a town administrator to, from an executive secretary, it was deleted and never upcap, but there used to be one.
Yeah.
For information.
Yeah, but it's not this one, obviously.
No, nope.
So, Andrew, I would encourage you to contact the town clerk, maybe clarify at our next meeting.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Safe Kids Halloween Party, that's happening October 19th at the Millville Police Station, starts at 6:00 PM. There's gonna be a haunted walk-through, magician, contest winners will be announced that night as well for a trunk of treats. I believe there's a bunch of people decorating their, their cars. Rain date will be October 26th for the same time, 6:00 PM. This program is brought to us by the Millville Cultural Council, and I think that's it. And obviously, if there's sponsoring, yeah, having their doors open, there'll be popcorn and a movie and apple cider beans served, starts at 6:00 PM.
It was a great event last year.
It was.
Also wanted to announce that Unibank gave a gift to the library for $1,306 for movie night. I'm not exactly sure what that is.
So they're sponsoring a family movie night bi-weekly at the library, and they're gonna start doing that in November, according to what information I have.
Oh, okay.
It's similar to like our seniors had to buy a licensing, in order to show and advertise, they had to buy a license to do that.
Oh, okay.
Because the seniors have theirs, what, I think they bought like six a year or twelve a year, they're allowed to show, so they must, they obviously got Unibank to sponsor that, and then they'll show movies and now they can publicize.
Okay, good.
Legally, legally.
Yeah, so I guess you can contact the library or look at the library's website for information on those movies should start and how often they will occur. Last but not least, Algonquin Gas Line Maintenance.
I can short-circuit that if you'd like, share. So basically, they're noting that they're gonna be doing some gasoline pipe maintenance and surveying activities where, starting on, it began where they would mow a 10-foot wide section over the pipeline, which they began September 30th, and then they're gonna start doing some surveys where the two to four technicians walk the right-of-way with electronic equipment to locate and obtain data about the pipelines. And they caution that if you have livestock that happens to be grazing or other activity in the right-of-way that might affect the test wire, just please contact the gentleman on this whose number is, he's based in Westwood, or woman, I'm sorry, Kathy Aruda, so that the contractor can trail and retrieve the wire in a shortened interval, I guess. So the number to call if you do have livestock or other activities out on the 10-foot wide section over the pipeline is (781) 329-2750, and I would imagine that any of others would have received this in the mail as well.
I was gonna say, they must have a list. Maybe it just affects the beavers up there.
Hopefully, they're watching tonight. Okay, thank you, Peter. We have some meeting minutes in here as well for September 16th, that everybody have a chance to review them.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Any input on these?
I would like to have the revisions put down in these minutes for what we did on the previous minutes during that meeting.
Clarify on me, please.
So in it here on this, in these minutes, it says under minutes, August 19th, 2019, and then it goes on to say about with recommendations, I'd like to have those recommendations on in these minutes as well, just to, to clarify, I think.
Yeah, I'm looking at the recommendation revision. What was, oh, with the revision, oh, revisions were revised. So those revised minutes should already be posted, though.
Yeah, but I was just saying to put them in there, that way if somebody reads these minutes, they kind of get an idea of, you know, just to clarify it, because otherwise it seems a little vague.
But, question for you, I have no problem with that, but what would it serve if they, if they really care, they're gonna go look at the August 19th minutes, right, and they'll be revised correctly?
True, but if they don't match up or something, or somehow there was a typo or something, you know, it's always good to cross-reference records.
Do we typically put in the revision notes?
I'm not familiar with that, but we could certainly add in whatever those changes were, we have to look back at that.
Revised, revised. Okay, we'll look into that. I don't remember if we typically put the revisions in, do you remember, Andrew, what the revisions were?
We do on some occasions, it's kind of, I remember some of it being, but some don't, so it's...
Okay. Anybody else?
I think sometimes when it was somebody's view or words, we may have clarified, you know, because it was a point of discussion rather than just a typo or a misnaming.
Right. Well, I guess going forward, if we always put in a revision note, then it's consistent.
Mm-hmm. Just on the last page, is this the typo on the motion made by, just needs to be...
By, is Y?
Yeah.
Changed to by.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Negative.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion to accept that we need the minute from September 16th needed.
Requested revisions, I think. Okay, anybody like the second?
Second.
All in favor? Well, first, is there any more discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, there's some correspondence here from Charter Communications, that there were newer proceedings. I don't know, maybe Tom or Jen could fill us in. I know that there's been a longstanding question about, you know, who supplies our cable, who's willing to. I'm assuming this is the only offer we got as usual, we, did anybody else put an offer out to us?
So...
It appears that this is three years in advance, so I don't know that anybody has yet put in anything else, but...
So, does it say in here when we have to accept? Because it seems a little premature if it's three years in advance.
Well, it's referencing an informal process, which would be preferable for all concerned.
I can share if you'd like.
Absolutely.
So typically, in the past, Tim, our cable guy, Tim Lavante, but then we've had other people join, so there's been a committee, and they are the cable...
Access Committee.
No, you have the cable access, and then you have the cable...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Commission.
Yeah.
And they are a group of people, and it changes year to year. They actually get together, they talk about the needs of the towns, the wants of the towns, you can talk to Tim about it, because he was on it last time, and Joe Repose was too. And then what they do is they kind of put out, Millville is looking for a cable provider.
Right.
And then it's kind of like a bidding, like people can...
RFP, maybe.
RFPs, or they do some process, I don't wanna speak out of, if I'm incorrect. So they send it out, and then cable companies, in theory, would send back proposals to take over the town, and what services do they provide? And in the past, Charter has been the only company to come back, even though they've reached out to Cox and this one in area.
Right. We just don't have a big enough customer base for most companies, is what it seems typically.
Yes. So I think that they do solicit, they try to get like, hey, we're looking, but Charter's been the only one, but we've had a cable commission who actually does the negotiation of that contract.
Right. And I believe they've come in and gave the input of what...
Yep. So I don't know if we wanna run this by Tim and see what...
Process, yep.
Yeah.
And so you, you don't have that commission in existence right now, right?
I think it's like, what is it, every 10 years this comes up?
Yeah.
Five, what is it, 10, maybe?
Okay, so that would be a new group to, you know, get some history and see.
That's why I was asking for the tribal knowledge here, so...
Yeah, so I would start with that committee to...
Yep.
We might have to reenact it, and hopefully, some people who've had problems would love to be part of that process.
Right, absolutely, and they're giving us enough notice where we can start the process, it's just...
Yes, I think they would just like to rubber stamp it in.
So Peter, will you share that with Tim, or should I?
Yeah.
You'll share it with Tim.
Yeah, and it's important to check with what they're doing for other towns and how much they're getting back versus how much we get back, because as you know, some of that money goes to our local cable access, but it also goes to BMR.
Yeah.
So we don't wanna make sure we're not, we're getting the...
A good deal.
A good deal, and that the return rate per subscriber is beneficial, especially now that people are all going streaming.
Yeah.
You know, so...
Yep. Good to know. All right. Any other questions on that? So we got an update from the Board of Health. It seems that AAA is still a concern in our community, we haven't had the hard frost as required to take our level down to, I believe we're still at a critical risk, Millville is. So, and as of 10-3, they had reported an eighth horse had contracted AAA in the town of Spencer, which isn't too far. The department health also reported 12 cases of human AAA in Massachusetts, so keep protecting yourself, and hopefully we get a hard frost soon to not have to worry about this anymore. They also wanted us to mention there's a vaping ban, an e-cigarette ban, put out by Governor Baker, since September 24th, issued a declaration emergency and approved it at all sales of vaping products and e-cigarettes in the state of Massachusetts. So it's just another update from Board of Health. Any questions on those two updates? And I believe the Board of Health has recommendations listed on their site...
That's right.
...for protection against AAA.
That's correct, and West Nile virus, mosquitoes as well. And on the vaping, they did go to two, two onsite inspections in town, done by the local Board of Health inspector.
Okay.
Millville Health Inspector, and instructed those two sites to remove all vaping and e-cigarettes from their shelves. It's an unfunded mandate from the state, if you will.
Ah, I know.
One of them.
Okay. Public forum? Nope, I don't think we're gonna get anybody tonight to come to chat with us. Move on to new business. We have some appointments here, I'll just go through them, and the first one is for the Millville Cultural Council. Erica Allen is listed here as a Millville resident, interested in becoming part of the Millville Cultural Council, so I'd be looking for...
And that's a vacancy that expires 6/30/21.
Okay, so it's filling at this point, okay. Should we do these one at a time, or...
They may all have different dates.
Yes.
All right, any discussion, anybody like to appoint Erica Allen to Millville Cultural Council?
Still moved, with the term as stated.
6/31, no, 6/30, 6/21. Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, looking for an appointment for a part-time police officer. Did the chief wanna be here for this one, or was he assuming we're gonna go through this?
He just assumed he would hear this one.
So you know sometimes he comes through.
That's right.
The part-time police officer, Peter Gallerani.
That I believe is a one-year, 6/30/20.
6/30/20?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's still moved.
So, is this in conjunction with the resignation of the other, was he a part-time as well?
Saint Pierre?
Yeah. So it's just like a...
I don't believe he was a part-time Saint Pierre, actually. I think he was a, one of the full-times, and the chief just hired a full-time, that young man that we had.
Right.
Mr. Johnson.
So he's replacing...
I can't say that for sure, you know, you have to ask the chief specifically.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a replacement, or, or Bob, Bob Johnson, is that what his name is?
That was his name, Robert Johnson.
He's replacing Saint Pierre, so...
So are we adding an additional part-time officer, or is this a...
It doesn't say here.
So, our part-time, the shifts don't change, it's just the amount of shifts they get change. So you might have a pool of part-timers, so when you're low, more people are working versus when your pool is larger, you might get less shifts.
So it's a negative balance, pretty much, it's just...
Yeah, it's not changing the amount of pay.
Right, so it's the part-timers will fill in all the part-time shifts, I don't think they're gonna add shifts to hire somebody.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
And I think they're usually understaffed in the part-time area, typically.
Okay. But what if they're understaffed with full-timers and they can't fill all those shifts with the ones, the current full-timers they have? Would they use the part-timers?
And they use part-timers.
But don't we already have a certain amount of shifts that the part-timers already cover if we were fully staffed with full-timers? So if we lost more full-timers, we'd have to fill those with part-timers, which means that we would be hiring more part-timers to fill those.
That's possible.
Right. The way the budget's running, that, that all shifts aren't filled, if I believe, I believe.
That's the last I heard, all shifts are not filled.
Yeah.
So they may end up with a deficit in one line item, part-time, and an overage in another, but it's, in the end, they can't go over the budget.
That's what made first this one, moving things around.
Yeah.
The line item that is voted on at town meeting doesn't change, the budget item for police doesn't change because of hiring or vacancies, if anything, it goes down.
But the deficit by the end of the year could be, if there was one.
Could be what?
Well, it could be, we could have, we would, might have to cover the deficit if, let's say, we had to hire more part-timers to fill the, the full-timers roles.
Actually, they're at a lower rate.
Then that would be a win.
Yeah, because then you're, you actually have a deficit on the full-time line, and you have an overage on the part-time line.
Not necessarily, because if you're having to hire and train all these people to make sure that they get their job thing...
We don't pay for training.
No, but like you have to get acclimated into any new job, that's the point, so you have to have somebody there with them, so that would be more double shifts.
Possible.
So, in essence, you could have a deficit by the end of the year.
In my experience with the police chief, our police budget has never gone over because of those reasons.
Right, be careful, fill the lines typically.
Right.
Fill the shifts, I should say. So, any other discussion? I don't think it looks like you need to get...
I said still moved, yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay, I wanna know the, I wanted to make sure before I put my set to anything.
Okay. The next one is an appointment for Jeffrey Wing as a veteran service officer, and this one...
6/30/20.
6/30/20, this is fulfilling a vacancy we have at this point in time.
Position require town residents?
No.
No.
Like Northbridge, Oxbridge, Douglas, they all share.
They share, I think.
Yeah, they share.
I didn't...
Yep.
We actually have it written in the bylaws, and people can, out of town can serve on that.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I just didn't remember.
They call it the Conny Canopic bylaw.
Which is good, because I think you have to be a veteran, but you don't have to be a veteran.
Right, that's correct.
So, to get both might be hard sometimes, so, looking for a motion?
So I'll make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Wing as the Veterans Service Officer to Millville, expiration 6/30/20.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're going to resignation.
There we go.
Do we have acting treasurers?
So on D, yep, so on that, actually, I had to get some clarity, and so I think the best approach right now, what we have is our treasurer's out on a sick, personal matter, so, and occasionally available, so the solution is to appoint Marcia Faro, who is also our assistant collector. She is not an assistant treasurer, she can be appointed as temporary treasurer, and that would be the recommended approach, and basically serve in that role until such time as the treasurer returns.
So she would be the temporary treasurer, meaning our treasurer is out, so she'll be answering all the questions, the treasurer will be answering at this point in time until part of the notice.
And, and, that's right, and signing documents and so forth, and to the extent there's some technical things that might, she might find challenging, she has resources to tap on, including actually the treasurer periodically.
How long is she gonna have the treasure?
It's going on the third week right now.
Third week, okay. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but do we know the expected return date?
It was expected to be an eight-week stint, so, five to six weeks, my guess, but...
So we have a reason for five weeks where we have no treasurer in place to deal with day-to-day.
That's correct.
Okay. And would Marcia be doing it at the rate of pay that we're offering at this point in time?
Well, I think it would be fair to say that she, it would be worth, you know, some modest supplement and still be within budget.
Yeah, because it would be offset, because the treasurer is not being paid for the time.
So I discussed that briefly with her, and I think I can cover that.
Okay. It works within the budget?
Yes.
The treasurer budget, without going over, okay.
That's correct.
Is there a shift, change in hours?
Right now, no. Right now, she thinks, it looks like she's handling it within the existing hours, so, between the hours and any change, we'll be covering it.
Okay.
And she would be paid out of the treasurer-collector's salary line item, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Looking for a motion, and this is just temporary until...
The treasurer returns.
Okay.
So I make a motion to attempt Marcia Faro as the temporary treasurer.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now we get into a resignation of Officer Edward Saint Pierre. He has a letter of resignation dated September 24th here. It doesn't say a reason. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Edward Saint Pierre from the Millville Police Department.
Looking for a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Typically, we just send a letter, Peter, to them, thanking them for their time in service in Millville.
But I just wanna say thank you to all that have been appointed and step forward to fill these roles, very important. Glad to have you all on board, and thank you for your service, Mr. Saint Pierre. All right, citizens petition for library funding.
I just put that in the new business as opposed to the next item, but they're really bundled together.
Okay. So, yeah, so this looks like a warrant article submission form, so this would bypass, basically, the Board of Select and voting to put an item on the warrant for special town meeting. This is submitted by the library board of trustees, and there are 135 verified signatures. I believe the town bylaw requires 100 signatures for a special town meeting, so I think this is just kind of a notice, we don't have to vote on this, so this will be added, the library's request would be on the special town meeting for additional funding in the amount of $29,500. Any questions? Hold business, discussion of a potential warrant article.
So, I'm, this is just an initial draft, it's being reviewed by council, we need some additional details and so forth, put in there clarity of wording, but it supplements the list you have and you've seen before. Some things you might wanna consider are the sequencing of things, this is just, you know, how I put it together, thinking how you might want it in a reasonable order to flow through the meeting, saving some of the best perhaps for last, most interesting.
Keep on that.
So the, one of the logistical items is when you, if you approve this this evening, the warrant's closed, no more submissions can take place, right?
We do need to take that vote, though.
Okay, and so...
We opened it, but we haven't, we gave a closing date, so we do need to vote this evening to close it.
Right.
And then logistics of signature, approval and signature of the warrant, which is, as we say, still being finalized in this draft form.
So I'm proposing we go through, put the warrant together as we wish, vote on it, and once Peter gets it blessed by town council, we can come in individually and sign off on it so it can get posted well in advance, because our next meeting is October 21st, which is 14 days before, at 7:00 PM, so there's really no time to, for us to come together again, and I don't think we need to come together as a group, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the past what we've done is we've had it put together, approved by town council, and then it's left here at the town hall, and we can come in and then it's left here at the, um, town hall, and we can come in individually and sign, I think it's seven copies? Or however the number is.
Talk to Norm through that, I believe it's seven.
Okay.
So whatever the number is, make sure when you do come in to sign off, you sign all seven copies. It'd be ideal to get it wrapped by the end of this week if we can.
If you only sign four, he shows up at your door, and that's what you're saying.
Make sure you come, when you come in to sign off, and Peter's going to send us an email, all of us an email, once it's ready, so we can come in and.
So for the purpose of the, the warrant, then, it won't have our recommendations on it, but will we at our next meeting do a vote on how this board stands for each one and have it as a handout?
That's how we've had it in the past.
At town meeting?
Because the recommendations from the finance committee will be put on there for town meeting, as well as the capital planning committee
So we'll have those as handouts.
and the Board of Selectmen. So that will, that will be the difference on the bottom, than what we're signing is the recommendations by Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and.
As a handout at town meeting?
Right.
And this will just be the articles itself?
Right.
Do you typically put capital program committees' recommendations, because their recommendations go to the Finance Committee?
We have, but they probably should if they're active in voting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
We have none.
I mean, it doesn't hurt.
That's right.
It doesn't hurt, because then people can ask.
But people will realize too, that it's more than just the sport, but.
Right.
But we could, um, we could put ours on there for what's going forth to the town, to the warrant, to the, uh, town council, because we're going to be voting tonight on these.
Yeah, but the only thing is, there is like, the parking bylaws is still being drafted.
Correct.
Like there's a space holder, so.
I know last year, we, we had all the recommendations done for town meeting, not for when it was posted.
Right.
So we can do that again, that's fine.
Yeah, well, we didn't have a, we didn't have a town administration, we had an interim guy, yeah.
So, but I mean, it's consistent with the way we've done it in the past.
Maybe that can be one document, too. You know what I mean, finance, Board of Selectmen, and capital can all be one sheet, so it's a quick glance across.
Yes.
Yeah, that's how, last year, that's how it was.
Easy, everybody sees where everybody.
Article one, yes or no, you know what I mean? Favor, not favor, or something?
Up to Peter, who can give the time to do that.
Save a tree, easy reference points.
We have eleven items to talk about here, I believe, that were brought forth to Peter's attention, um, as well as the planning committee has met on some of these items, capital planning committee has met on some of these items, and some of these items have come forth to the Board of Selectmen. So what I think we should do is, we should just look at one at, one at a time and decide how much discussion we want to spend on each one, depending on how, um, how little knowledge we have, or how much knowledge we have on each item. And then we can, once we decide which ones we want to put on the warrant, decide in order if we shall decide to change the order up. Peter, do we know what the unpaid invoices are at this point in time?
We, we know of two, one is for some septic loan, Betterment loan payments.
Okay.
Um, that's about forty-eight hundred bucks. And another one is, um, balance of a T E C invoice for some stormwater engineering work that was done, and that's somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, from what I just saw, about, I think it was eight thousand dollars. No, I'm sorry, six thousand dollars, the bill was over eight, there's six thousand. So they, there were some left in the budget that offset the final amount that has to be covered here.
Okay.
And there may be one more, I just don't, I, I don't know that yet.
So this time, we have about eleven thousand right now.
Betterment loan programs are revolving account, how can that be in our arrears or unpaid?
Yeah, I'm not sure what, whether it's coming out of that account, or whether it's coming out of budget. I didn't really look at it too closely, it was submitted by the Board of Health, it's coming out of one of their budget items, and it just came through.
So when they motion.
Between selectmen visits, so I didn't see it.
So when the motion's made for that, we may hear forty-eight hundred from this account, six thousand from that account, gotcha.
That's correct. That's correct.
Got to pay the bills, I'm good with that.
Do we know what our balances are on stabilization free cash at this point in time, I know that.
So.
Just, I might as well ask at the beginning of this, I'm just curious.
All right, so I'll tell, I'll tell you what's in the stabilization accounts, all right? So we have, the general stabilization account has six hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, okay? The capital stabilization account has one hundred thousand dollars even. Um, the, the, uh, public safety stabilization account, right now, has forty thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. But once the six thirty nineteen amounts are finalized, um, from the, um.
It's going to get fifty percent of ambulance.
Well, no, it's going to get what was in the balance at six thirty nineteen from the ambulance receipts revenue fund. And right now, the preliminary number that's in there, and is, I would say, remote possibility would change, is over two hundred and six thousand dollars. So you're talking about that public safety stabilization fund, which will, that will be nailed down before this special town meeting.
Okay.
Will have some amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, and that's what I expect.
So that's what's going to be in that line item when we have, um, town, special town meeting, approximately.
That's correct. That's correct, that's correct. So now, you did ask about free cash, and I always was of the impression that free cash, if you didn't use it from before, it was available to be used, but in consultation with town accountant and confirmed by council, as of seven one nineteen, there's none available.
What did it tell, does it blow back to where?
You have to wait until you get the new number certified, which we're still trying to, you know, get.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's new news to me as well.
I'm hoping to get, we're not trying to get, that's news to me.
Goes against the past practices that we've done.
And then it probably goes against that past practice that you've done.
Yeah, so essentially, free cash, once certified, and whatever you don't spend through the fiscal year-end goes to zero.
That's at seven one.
Doesn't go to zero, freezes basically, freezes, and then rolls into the next.
It no longer exists, is what.
Then it rolls into the free cash for the number for next.
So I have a question, so, um, it would be, I'd like, um, clar- not clarification, but just make sure that, that's the, that.
Well, so again, here's, uh.
It is, but I'm wondering if at town meeting, that we have at annual town meeting, that there's the last, you can have a stabilization article at the beginning for transferring, but you should probably have one at the end or reconsideration to put whatever's left in free cash, if we're going to lose it, might as well put it in stabilization.
Put it all away. Well, it's not that you lose it, it's just going to roll into the.
It just becomes unavailable.
It's no longer available, that's correct.
It's no longer available, so it would be probably in our best interest to put a second stabilization at the end of our meeting, transfer whatever free cash has not been spent into stabilization.
We have plenty of time to talk about that.
I know, I'm just thinking of him, but you know what I'm saying?
So you, you spoke to town accountant and town council, should we confirm with D O R?
Yeah, so I'll still do that, I just got from council.
I'd feel much better if we confirmed that with D O R.
That's right, that's right.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that's it, you don't have any other money for us?
Yeah, we'll pay trust fund, there's some amount in there, but.
We're not touching that.
No.
So let me ask you this, um, to my board. Do, are we okay with going through voting on these and then arranging them, or do you want to arrange them and then vote on them? Does it matter, is there any logistical reasons to do it either way?
Doesn't matter to me.
I, um, I don't have a problem with the order.
Okay.
It pretty much follows past practice.
Okay. All right.
Of funding bylaws petitions.
Okay, that's fine, we'll just confirm at the end. So why don't we start with, um, the first one, the twenty twenty budget adjustments, which we just talked about prior bills? Um, any other discussion on, on this article? Looking for a motion?
Do you want to just make a motion at the end and hold the ones we don't?
That's a good idea, we can do that.
One big, so if anyone wants to hold one at the end, we can hold it and vote on the bunch?
Good idea, okay. Okay, um, police H VAC, now this one has already been spent. This is the one that's been spent, right?
Yes, so this is replenishment of the reserve fund from capital stabilization.
Okay.
And otherwise, the, uh, reserve fund has diminished significantly, there's less than five thousand dollars there for future transfer needs, and, you know, they seem to rise up. And it was one of the understandings of the Finance Committee to approve this transfer was knowing that it would be presented to the voters at town meeting to replenish that fund for the amount used for the, really, the urgent need at the, at the, you know, police station.
Right.
And, and, you know, work is underway, they've been measuring, stuff's been ordered, I don't, I haven't checked today, but.
Does anybody need further detail on that one? I apologize if I go fast through any of them, I feel like I've talked about these all a few times.
I think I have.
Police station generator. Um, any questions on that? Senior center generator. So let me go back up one, the police H VAC is thirty thousand four hundred, police station generator, eleven thousand dollars, senior center generator, seventeen thousand dollars, and that came forth because we've been using that as an emergency, um, shelter, per se, and, um, they don't have a generator, so that can be problematic, so.
And the difference in pricing is because the police station is retrofitted for a generator?
And this one needs a pad, yep, so that's the difference of eleven thousand and seventeen thousand in generators. And we can get one on wheels and we'll look back and forth. Uh, police cruiser. I don't know if anybody's been following Capital Planning Committee. We have, uh, each member on the Capital Planning Committee has taken on, uh, basically, a responsibility of capital expenditures, and we have one of our members who's taken on basically police and fire, a very qualified member, because he's a fireman himself, and he's been looking at a lot of the equipment to verify, uh, basically, if the need is really there. And I think, um, and I believe Josh would agree, that the need's there for the items we have on the list for police station, and Peter's on the committee as well, would you agree with me in that statement?
Yes, I would agree with you, that's correct, yep.
Don't want to put words in Josh's mouth, but, um, I know that we skipped buying police cruisers like the last year or two, so. That's a request coming forth from police station, any questions?
One question, do we know how old the cruiser that they're replacing is?
It's a thirteen or twelve, and it's got ninety-five thousand miles on it, and you, technically, really, you should add another twenty, twenty-five percent for the idle time.
Yeah.
So it's over a hundred, it's beyond warranty, it's, uh, well beyond its normal useful life as a police cruiser, and so.
And it's recommended by the, whatever.
That's right.
Whatever the board that they go to recommended that it replaces cruisers after, is it three or four years?
Well, I, I think that varies by community, it, it was more the timeframe for ambulance.
Oh, and so many different.
That's right, so that's the Fire Safety Board.
Three or four years, I suppose.
But this article is, uh, is no more than forty-eight thousand dollars, which is the price of a Ford Explorer outfitted as needed. Can't retrofit any of the existing equipment onto that vehicle, right? But at the same time, they are, been driving around last week and this week, a Dodge Charger, basically. And, uh, I think the chief has been more impressed with it than he expected to be, and it's ten thousand dollars less.
That's about ten thousand dollars less, but it's gotten terrible reviews by other police stations, because I was like, oh, great. And Josh also said that they bought one for his department, and they'll never buy one again because of repair costs and for some other reasons. So, but they're now test driving it, because it is ten thousand dollars less, so.
It has a longer warranty, actually, so, you know, arguably, the repair costs are mostly covered under the warranty.
Yeah, all right.
Like Carras through the typical six-year run that Millville uses for police cruisers.
Any other discussion on that one?
Thoughts of a Tesla, huh?
You never know, though. Uh, Peter, would you like to discuss M E S water, because I know you were going back and forth with this one a little bit.
Right, so I put, that's still in there, and, um, and it really, it, if, it relates, we had Congressman McGovern, so skipping around the town administrator report, but we had Congressman McGovern in last week, because Selectmen Hall was there, there was a whole bunch of folks there, actually, uh, people from the E P A, from Mast D E P, school committee members, school administration, the chief, and Congressman's staff. And, uh, they came to learn about the M E S water challenges that Millville has been having. And, uh, as part of a visit to Millville and Oxbridge, and they're looking at E P A related types of challenges, and we were able to sort of shoehorn the water issue as part of that discussion. And, uh, anyway, um, you know, we're looking for, there are no easy answers for a big solution to the challenges up there. Right now, one of the most visible things for the congressman to see, besides some math challenges that he had to deal with in one of the classrooms and so forth, he did a good job, um, but he, he saw the bubblers covered up in, uh, plastic bags, basically. And that's even in spite of the fact that we're testing fine, they're still not drinking the water, and they're drinking bottled water up there. And so that's a big issue. So, um, as we know, the town had to do a corrective action plan with Mast D E P, and in that, it had long-term objectives, the long-term objective, finding an alternate source to the water that we're currently treating, whether it's another well, or it's another kind of a solution, I don't know what, and the other, and then thirdly, uh, finding water supply from another community, um, that would serve the needs of the school up there. And, you know, there's no, there's no readily avail, there's no, there are no federal funds, if the, if I could say it clearly.
Basically, what he said was, there's no money, but here's some resources who may have money.
So he put me, they put me in contact with those other resources, and I'll tell you, when the, the folks from Washington call these other resources, they, they ask, you know, say jump, they ask how high. So tomorrow, I'm meeting with the key person of one of the resources, he's coming in tomorrow to meet with me. That said, I, this is still on there as a, as, in two, for two, two basic purposes. One, we, we do need to evaluate what to do, and you don't know what to do, and some of the things I saw as, as resources available suggest that you have done some study in advance anyway, before they'll provide you any resources, right? So that's on here, this also is on there, so, bless you, so people think long-term, in terms of what they have to deal with on the next warrant article, which is the boiler, so they're, they're at least aware that there are some challenges out there that might cost real money.
So are you suggestion, suggesting we leave this on there, but in the hopes that maybe we'll get fifty thousand dollars from the government?
Well, we might get that, we might get that, I don't, I, I don't know, but I might, but I might, based on tomorrow's meeting, come back and say, let's withdraw that, or we could withdraw it at town meeting, actually, and that, that might be the, so, a wise person suggested that might be the way to go.
Right, right.
You know, keep it there until we decide we don't need it, but we'll have also planted the seed of people's minds that this is a, you know, part of a larger challenge.
Right.
That's valuable.
So if we had to spend this money, who would do that studying?
I don't know, I think we would have to, you know.
Have, hire an outside.
Hire an outside firm to explore that, that's correct.
Absolutely.
Engineers and.
That's right, yeah, it's a big deal, and, you know, the, the congressman asked, well, what do you think the cost of tapping into Blackstone's water supply would be? And I said, well, I don't know, maybe two to six million dollars, and the head of the Worcester D E P said, yeah, it's probably going to be on the high side of that at a minimum, so. And, and I don't know that they necessarily have the best water, I'm not saying they don't, but you, you know, who knows what their quality is? They're dealing with some multiple wells, they're, I guess they're getting Woonsocket water as well, which is done through a very good system, from what I'm told, so.
Yeah, Woonsocket's actually building an eighty million dollar facility now.
Can they swing a pipe through Millville for us?
Exchange of things has happened.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
But it's something we need to accomplish and other, really, this goes back twenty years.
Yeah, we've spent a lot of money.
Yeah.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
And it hasn't fixed it.
Right, that's gotten worse.
Yep.
Well, the challenges are worse in terms of the iron content keeps going up, so, um, that's harder to treat out.
Yeah.
And, and in addition, I just got a request from the operator that they have to get access to the wellhead because the capacity is somehow getting restricted, which presumably is because it's restricted from.
Building and buildup.
Yeah, probably.
Buildup, that's right, so.
Okay, that's fair enough.
It's a never-ending challenge.
Yes.
Any other questions on that one? M E S boiler replacement, is everybody up to date on this one? So basically, um, the M E S boiler is about twenty-seven years old, I think, right? Seven, about twenty-six years old, something like that, um, a boiler, uh, life expectancy is about twenty-five years. Um, they're very expensive, um, as you know, the committee came here and presented to us about a one point eight million dollar price tag to replace the boiler at the Millville Elementary School, um, with the caveat of, uh, M E S B A reimbursing us sixty percent, which is great. I have to tell you, I was a little bit on the fence with this one, with the big price tag, but at the same time, with being on the Capital Planning Committee and going through extra discussions there and having more present, uh, presentations there, um, basically, it's our responsibility, I believe, to bring this forth to the town to let them vote, because this would be a dead exclusion, number one. Number two, if we decide, uh, if the town decides not to go forth with this, and the boiler breaks in March, per se, for instance, then we'd be on the hook for the entire amount, as opposed to forty percent of it. So I think, um, I think this is going to have to be presented to the town, more than likely by the school.
That's correct, yes, and they'll bring the engineers in, the.
Yes, because there's going to be a lot of questions. It's a lot of money. So any, any discussions by the town need to be had that night. And then we need to have all the right people in the room to answer all the questions that the town will have. Any other discussions on that one?
No. Just know the M S B A reimbursement rate doesn't really go up. So if you wait, that rate will be.
What I'm saying, it could also be zero if we, if the.
That's what I'm saying. That rate keeps going down. Like I can remember doing projects at eighty percent reimbursement. Now we're slightly below sixty. So that number never really climbs. It keeps coming down.
Yeah, so.
And we know that the need out there is so great that, that we didn't qualify for the M S B A loan last time. Because the criteria used to be twenty years and now it's thirty years on the school because there are so many applications going in.
Right.
So, I mean, if we're going to get it, then we, we should take it.
All right. Effective session matter, I think we all know what that item is. Bylaw change to move election date to after annual town meeting. Any questions? Zoning changes to pardon the possible signage regulations.
I think they're just sticking to the parking.
Just to the parking? Where is this related to? I don't know about this one.
I think they're just clarifying some of the wording as it relates to police ticketing and so forth. What situations that, that there are violations that can be enforced and to, so I, I can't speak to it directly. I do know that they're planning on, they're going to hold a public hearing on Thursday, October seventeenth at seven P M. here regarding this.
So people should show up to that with any questions they want. Seven P M. on the seventeenth?
That's correct.
Okay. And a bylaw change, revised by law twenty-eight, rewarding salary as per contract to one or more positions. Also, conform to minimum wage rates current and future. I think, I don't think we really have much of a choice on that one because we haven't had that updated in a while. Is that correct, Jen?
Yeah, it doesn't reflect the minimum wage.
Yeah, I think we have the one about when they left last year.
Yeah, so we can get it to whatever that, I know it's going up over a variety of years.
We're working out the wording, so.
Now, do we have a dollar amount anywhere now?
For, yeah.
Do we have to have a dollar amount? Can we just say minimum wage? We don't have to update it again.
We can just write minimum wage. Well, but it might not be minimum wage. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you have different positions with it, which have different ranges. So I don't know which ones the minimum wage technically will ultimately impact. So the idea is to be general. Well, so that's why I'm looking, I'm hoping they'll come up, the right wording can be determined that allows for minimum wage to the extent it exceeds what's in the grid that applies. That's right. So you don't have to keep changing the bylaws. Yeah, I mean, you might long-term rethink having that grid in there in some manner. I don't know. You know, some communities, I don't, I don't know that they do that sort of thing, so.
All right, and then Article eleven's a lifer, which. Nobody held any articles.
I'd like to hold the parking, just so I can see it.
Okay.
You know, I don't want, I don't want to vote on something that I haven't seen. As far as, I don't have a problem with it coming on here. I just, I don't want to say, yes, I approve this. Are we doing our recommendations right now? Or are we just doing?
We can do our recommendations.
Well, you're going to close it. You have to close it.
We can do our recommendations at our next meeting.
Okay, all right.
We can close it, leave it on there and do our recommendations. So if we decide we don't want to recommend something at our next meeting, we can do our recommendations then.
So this is just an acknowledgement of.
This is closing it, allowing Peter to bring it to town council. This is the warrant item, articles that will come on the special town meeting. But at our next meeting, we at Florida Select Mobile list on there how many of us approve it, how many. So it'll be five, zero, four, one, three, two, whatever it may be.
Gotcha.
So it's just whether you need to take any particular, well, if you want to approve it, no, but it's really, that allows you to sign this thing once it's drafted, right?
Yeah, right, which we.
Which is different than your recommendation determination.
Exactly. And we did this like, I know it's last, I believe. So tonight we'll vote on it and then if we approve it, articles.
Should we make a motion to close the warrant and then vote for the warrant items?
Yeah.
Does it sound okay?
Yep.
So I make a motion to close the warrant for the special town meeting of November fourth, two thousand nineteen?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So I make a motion to accept the eleven articles that have been submitted and that will be approved.
Hold on one second.
I don't know if I have the numbering. I think it's twelve.
I think it's twelve.
Yeah, I think it's twelve.
Yeah, you know what? The executive session one is listed on this draft.
Yeah, it's not on there.
So there's twelve.
Twelve. Thank you for the catch.
That's right.
All right. So I'm going to amend my motion. So I move to accept the twelve articles that have been presented to the board in the spirit that we have discussed with the amendments and changes made by our town administrator at the, along with our town council.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So everybody good with the order in which we have the articles?
I'm trying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd be amazed.
Did you vote, Kevin?
Yes, aye.
All right.
Just to get this one I anticipated.
I told you it was a quick one. We're all up to date on how did this go on. All right, next, Selectma reports. First up, Andrew, update on the rec regional agreement modifications.
So unfortunately, I was not able to attend the last meeting, so I do not, I'm not currently up to date on what was discussed at the meeting.
Are the meetings not on nights that you can attend or are they on the same night every week?
They're usually on, I believe, at the Thursday, the third Thursday of the month. It just happened that something came up right a couple of days before and I wasn't able to attend.
Are you able to make it to the next meeting?
Yes, I will be.
Okay. Just because this is a very important topic for us. We have had some updates from the finance committee member and I'm hoping that we can get some updates from our board at the next meeting.
Could we, if maybe something comes up, maybe send an email to you and then if one of us are available, we could attend?
Yeah, that's definitely a good idea.
At least we have someone sitting at the table representing. I'm available every other Thursday because of Girl Scouts, but I'm always willing to go.
So if you can't make it, just do a blasting of all of us. Just don't apply and then one of us can show up. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Just because it's such an important document that's being discussed. If anybody wanted to discuss anything they've heard or read.
I read it. I'm going to wait for Peter. He's got lots of things outlined.
Okay. All right. Update on the Capital Planning, Capital Program Committee. I'm on that committee and we have got through a lot of items in town. Like I said, we have a committee member basically covering each area of all the capital needs that we have in place right now. And it keeps growing. But I think we have all the right people in the right areas. We have somebody that's a real estate person doing some discussions with the town hall. We have a local fireman from another town doing fire and police. We have, I'm covering the M E S boiler, just because I've been so involved with that. Peter's covering water and are you covering the water?
Well, no, actually Ken Tubman's covering the water. I'm the backstop, I'm the backstop to everybody.
Yeah, you're teaching him about water. That's right. That's right. And then we have one other one, the highway department. We have a gentleman covering the highway department needs. And we're meeting every couple of weeks and we've had some different departments come in and express their needs. And we've put requests out to them to tell them what we need to basically validate their needs. And I think it's coming along pretty well. Getting a lot of work done. And that's what I have the updates on. Anybody have questions on our, they're not recorded, but there are meeting minutes that you can find out there. Okay, and then I skipped Jen. What is Jen covering?
School, something to, oh, the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee.
Oh, she, is she on that one?
She's got, so she goes to those meetings and so she's keeping up to date on that sort of thing.
Right.
I think is what she's doing.
Okay. All right, Peter, your turn.
All right. So I talked about Congressman McGovern's visit and, you know, there was a long list of people and there was an even longer list of people not on this list of people that was there. And I provided a brief backgrounder to the congressman in advance, or actually through Representative Sworder's office. He set this up, so it was good. He was there as well and his team. And so this was just a little background on Millville and the challenges we face. I did try to include a little bit about the town hall and the parcel of land that the town owns on the river behind the pub there. So anyway, I thought it was a good visit, as I say. It was great to have Selectman Hall there. He stepped in with a couple of the right key comments at the right time that reinforced the need.
Thanks for going.
It was good. It was good.
Glad to be there and it was nice to see that many people actually interested in what we need.
That's great. That's great.
Yeah, so I was at the P T A, the M S B A meeting last week and the principal presented. It was the same, same day that they came through. And she said that they had told the teachers there'd be like three or four people coming into the classroom and she's.
More like thirty-four.
She said, she goes, so she got two teachers to say, okay, yeah, come on in. And so they went in and she's like, they just kept coming and coming. And the teachers' faces were like, oh, it's like they thought just a couple of people. But I know they, I know the kids, at least in the fifth grade classroom thoroughly enjoyed the visit from the adults.
It was, that was so cool to see the first graders and the third, the fifth graders. That was a great group of kids. I mean, good for Millville, they're great kids. Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you, Millville Elementary School for.
Yeah, yeah.
Hosting that many people.
She was a great hostess there.
She's good. She's good, Mrs. Shaver.
Yes. I'm glad you got some names and numbers out of them for some.
Peter has people in Washington jumping.
That's right. It's crazy.
We'll take it.
That's awesome.
Yeah. No, Millville's, they know about Millville. We're on the map. That's right. Yep. So I did attend the last finance committee meeting and, you know, they went through the warrant articles, I think, that the chief was there to present some of his. So they're up to speed. They're going to meet on the twenty-fourth and make their recommendations after you folks on the twenty-first, basically. So there's, or actually the twenty-ninth, I think. They're doing a public hearing on the twenty-ninth because they're required to do a public hearing. So they've scheduled that for the twenty-ninth. Now, we did talk a little bit about the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, talked about the Capital Program Committee and so forth. So it was a, we're covering a lot of the same ground and that makes sense because the ground is all about what's happening November fourth. So that was good. Next item, Central Street, according to Brian, this evening, you know, he calls it seventy-five percent complete. There's pavement milling going to take place Wednesday and Thursday. I can't say for sure I know exactly what that means, but it's a big step in the right direction. The last granite is going in tomorrow, as he says, which is the curbing and so forth. So that thing is moving along on track.
Nice.
And I know it's been an inconvenience for folks, but I think it's going to be awesome when it's done.
Yeah.
Good, good things come to those who wait.
Yes. It looks good.
It's really shaping up.
Next item, audit status. So we have lined up an audit firm. They're going to, right now, tentatively come in in January. They're booked right through then. They might do a little preliminary work in advance. There'll be an engagement letter that you folks will be, that will be, you know, assigned to you folks. And will outline and mostly in boilerplate basically what they're going to do. It's the same firm we had used in the past, which allows them to roll forward, yeah, Brown. So to roll forward from, basically get to a good starting point of fiscal year. They're going to come in audit at six, the year end is six thirty nineteen. And so to do that, they've got to get to a beginning seven, one, eighteen, good balance to work for the year, you know, that year. And he, Mr. Brown doesn't think that's going to be too challenging for him based on his familiarity with the town and what he thinks he needs to know and so forth. So that's all good.
Is this the, is this being paid by the town of Millville or do you receive any funds from Mr. Fatman?
So that will come out of the town's budget, okay? And it's within the town's budget. It's not, I think, there was some concern because of the many years that audit hadn't taken place that it might be a very costly exercise. But because of his familiarity and so forth, he was able to come in within our budgeted amount for that. Separately, there is an earmark specifically identified for which I just got a contract to sign and with which I have to submit, you know, here's what we're going to do with the money of thirty thousand dollars. That money is not for an external audit. That money is for internal audit. And that's a broad thing. So a lot of the money can be used, as I interpret it, and which I will outline in the letter request, basically, going with the contract I signed, for, you know, audit preparation, for deep dives into some of the accounts that I've certainly noticed that need deep diving. So all, all of the above will fall within the scope of that earmark.
Right. And doing all of that internal preparation with that earmark will help keep the amount down for the external audit because then we're going to have to come in and dig.
That's right.
So I think it will be a good balance.
That's right. So I think the town's fortunate to have that earmark as well as this auditor. This audit firm does the B M R audit. And so you can go online and look at their audit report. It's, you know, quite extensive. That's what they're required to do. That will be the byproduct of their work for us. They also do Dover Sherburne Regional Schools.
Because they can understand the regional school agreement.
That's right. And so that's important because one of the things I, you know, when I was in Sherburne, we would get an audit and it, you almost would read, you, you almost didn't know there was this enormous thing hanging out there called a regional school system. And so I got them to put in additional disclosures and I will be looking to do that here. And I think you will have a good understanding of how best to do that.
So come January, can that earmark disappear?
No, I think we have a year for it. I, you know, I have to double check. Yeah.
Wasn't, sometimes I know it was, you said like you had money and then January rolls around and the governor, you know, will.
That's a good question. I, I didn't see that in what I've seen so far.
It's not always guarantees, but if you're signing a contract.
Yeah, then they're going to transfer the funds. They'll, once the contract is signed and they approve the request letter that I provide them outlining how the money's going to be used, they transfer the money. So the money in the bank is the key. It's hardly like.
Because we, we, like for the Centennial, we had money and then it came January and it got lost. It was cut.
I see.
So, and that was earmarked. So it's good to know if we can get that contract. It sounds like it's going to be there.
Right. Okay, item E. We did receive notice from Bay State Municipal Accounting, which serves as our town accountant service provider, that they're terminating the agreement by the end of the year, the end of the calendar year. Mostly for the principal, Justin, his personal reasons.
There's no agreement to terminate. They're just getting a notice of termination, right? Because we.
That's right. And actually, we, we're on an extension anyway on the deal. So that's fine. There's, and we still have Derek. We still have their, you know, their resources that, that we use. And, you know, what we do from there, still kind of processing that.
So is Derek going to continue beyond the ninety days?
Maybe, yes. So that's, we're having discussions. I'm having deep discussions with him. And it really is, you know, for him to do that successfully, he has to have at least maybe one and a half other towns like Millville to make it work for him. If he gets it too big, then he's got to have staff or something. So there, he's trying to figure out whether that's the road he's going to go down. And in the meantime, there's one or more resources we could be chasing.
Is he on as a staff accountant for Justin right now? Is that all, is that what his?
I don't know his title. I don't have a card from him. So I call him our town, he's serving in the role that Justin served in previously. No, but he's served as a town accountant in another community.
Okay.
And he's acted, I don't know that he's a C P A, but he's served as a town accountant.
My questions are because I just want to know, is he qualified to file our annual reports? reports with the state?
I see, I see.
So those would be questions that I'd be interested in getting answers to.
Right, right.
Because if we bring him on and they can't file those reports, it's problematic.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the last item I just put on there was coffee with a cop. I, I got over there. I had a free cup of coffee and a little bit of pastry, and-
Nice.
Got my picture taken with the chief, you know.
Pictures all over town lately. Good for you, Peter, getting around.
So there I stood between two guys with guns, you know. It was all my best behavior. But no, it was good, and I think I would, I would, no, there wasn't as good a turnout as one would hope. So I hope the next time it happens, that more people show up, because it was, it's a nice environment, a nice, nice event, so.
Good. Thank you to the police for stepping up and having coffee.
And it really was a, like, a statewide effort, wasn't it, or a national effort?
I think it was a national day, yeah.
Yes, yeah, I think so.
So, it was really kinda cool.
All right. I'm just gonna take the, oh, we already voted on, uh, did you have anything else, Peter, before?
No, no. So you're gonna need to sign the minutes with the changes, as well as that, uh-
The parade for the toll day permit.
We voted.
We already voted on that.
That's right. So here's the document.
Okay.
And, uh-
So we just have to sign for the, uh, toll day permit and the meeting minutes on September sixteenth.
So you're signing this right here. Put them aside. Here's the signature page for the minutes.
And the toll day is actually this weekend, eight to one, rain date, the nineteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, I can-
Okay. Our next regular meeting will be October twenty-first, twenty nineteen. But keep a lookout on your email, um, for Peter to tell you that the warrant is ready to be signed, uh, here at the town hall. Um, everybody have a key fob, but I'm not sure if everybody's opened this one, but-
It does, but if it's alarmed, you're not gonna be able to-
If you can't come in during the, during the day, let one of us, and I can come down, or Peter's usually here always. Yeah, they can have it?
Last time we signed something, it was in the file cabinet.
Yeah, I guess we can leave them there again.
Yeah, we could do that, or you-
It's not confidential.
No, no, it's not.
No.
Who's gonna steal some copies of them?
So maybe we'll leave it there, so.
Leave it right there, that's right.
No, it's a lot.
Do we have any items not recently anticipated, the last forty-eight hours? Okay, now we're gonna go into executive session.
I'm going to move-
Go ahead.
By roll call vote. To enter executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy relative to pending or threatening litigation where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamster Union Local one seventy, and to reconvene in open session only to adjourn the meeting.
Roll call?
Aye.
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 Okay, I'll get my stuff.
And then Madison can close up. And Madison, just scoot out when you need to.
I actually did the executive session properly during the capital planning committee.
Did you?
Even a blind squirrel finds a nut every once in a while.
Huh?
Even a blind squirrel finds a nut every once in a while.